Okay, everybody, six o'clock. I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the Danville School District Board of Directors. November the seventh, six o'clock. I'm taking cargo of the Chair of the Board. We have board members in the room and they are as follows.
Dave Dolby, Chair.
Melissa Conley.
Tim Tamer.
Molly Gleason should be joining us later. On line we have on the television screen there, we have our Superintendent.
Mark Tucker.
There. We have a couple of guests from the Town Meeting Committee and they're gonna give us a presentation. Glenn Heron's gonna lead the presentation. Alice Kitchell's also here. And um. Well, you know, Mark, if you can allow. Allow me to share my screen so I can book the.
All right, before you start.
Oh, sorry. You got that right. Are there any additions and or changes to the agenda? Late last week, I added in student representation as a discussion action item at the very bottom. I'll tell you about that later, but that's not new for now. That was on the horned agenda. So pass that. I'm gonna go to the presentation by the Town Meeting Committee. Thank you. And then let me go to. Now I gotta really let her share my screen. Hold on. Takes me like ten minutes. Everything that one is.
I'll just say while you're starting, I there's a lot of text in here, but it's not my intent to read this by any means. I mean, I'm expecting to take maybe ten minutes of me talking if that. Uh, and you guys then are welcome obviously to. Just tell me whatever and stop me, stop me anytime or ask questions as I go, but um. I'm just gonna hit a few things real quick. Um, and then the rest of this is their kind of a reference info for you to see why I'm saying the few things I'm saying.
All right, I'm digging that up. You know, making it as big as I can make it. All right, Glenn, you have the floor.
Okay, so I think we can just so uh, I'm here, I'm not the Chair. Oh, we've Allison just actually another member of the Meeting Committee. So um. We are uh, the the Select Board appointed uh, seven people to be on the Town Meeting Committee. Uh, and this is our first of what I anticipate to be three briefs to you. I'm not the Chair. Um, Tom.
Zabrowski.
Zabrowski is the Chair, uh, but I was uh, appointed as the uh, talking head for this, so I'll just go ahead. Um, if you can go down to the next one. Um, so the the main purpose of this is just to outbrief you as a school ward, uh, because we haven't had a chance to talk to you yet. We we think you're interested. Uh, because this will um, affect you at least indirectly, if not directly. Um, and so again, this is our first chance to talk to you. Um. I will be giving you some updates to facts and assumptions. We want to validate the task that we have from the town with you as the school board to make sure that. We're on the same page, or if we're not, what's the differences are. Um, we uh, we wanna seek your guidance. So whatever, you know, you have that you wanna tell the committee. Uh, that you want us to do. We wanna take that back and work on that as well. Um, and then this will also let you know what the project schedule is that we anticipate, so that you can give us any guidance on that. So the agenda is up there as well. Uh, next slide. So for the for the background, uh, for the situation. Of course, Vermont mandates town meetings that, you know, I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. Uh, there's really two components to that. Most people, when when you say town meeting, they think of the floor meeting. That's that's like uh, actually only one of the two. Uh, components, because Australian ballot is the other one. Uh, when people go and vote an Australian ballot, that's also town meeting. So when I talk, I'll try and distinguish between floor meeting and. Australian ballot, because they're both the town meeting. Um, in Danville, um, we do both. Of course, we have the floor meeting and we have the um, the Australian ballot. Um, and by the way, I'll also try and distinguish between uh, the school meeting, uh, which I tend to think of as the same, but is not um, as you are very well. Um, one of the first things we learned there in the middle is our data for this is very hard to get. Um, there's uh, Secretary of State data that we have pulled from. Uh, but if you see a number here like, you know, thirteen percent and you say, are you sure that's not twelve? No, no, I can show you. I can show you exactly where that data comes from and how we average numbers to get to thirteen. But if you say, how come that's only, you know, two thirds of the numbers or something else, I'll say, because there's not very good data. So just so you know. So. We've we've analyzed what we could from the data, but just recognize that it's it's not, you know, when you when you talk, uh, if you you're the school board, you talk, you know. Uh, number of significant digits, we're probably talking about one with most of the data that we have here. So, you know, difference between ten percent, twenty percent, yeah, that's probably valid. Difference between ten percent, eleven percent. No, not so much. Uh, and finally, uh, as we've talked to other towns, every town is different. Uh, there's there's towns that do it one way and are really happy and towns that do it the same way that are not. And there are towns that do it one way and would like to do it the other way, and that might make them happier or might not. What what works for one town uh, does not work for another, but works for. Uh, it's just, it's very different. So we're really focused on Danville. Uh, next slide. For our research notes, and we have uh, several things there that we that we've discovered, some of which are probably uh, not a surprise, but maybe. Um, but the biggest thing um, that you may have heard before, issues are the most important determinant. So um, if you have a year when the most exciting thing that that comes up is um. Whether or not the town should formally get rid of the auditor position. You don't get many people coming to to town meeting or voting. Uh, but when you have an issue like, you know, an expansion of the school or something like that, that gets a lot of people interested and you get a lot of. Uh, next slide. So for towns across Vermont. Most towns use a hybrid where they they have a floor meeting for some parts and an Australian ballot for other. Um, across Vermont, talking to town officials, um. There seems to be a general perception that there's dwindling attendance, um, but that does as near as we can tell. That doesn't seem to be a perception. It's not necessarily the reality. Um. And and part of that perception is because COVID, when uh, when you mailed everyone ballots and gave them a really easy way to vote uh, by by mailing them things that they could just mail back. Most towns saw an enormous spike, as did Danville. Uh, and so you look at, you know, how many people voted there versus how many people voted like in twenty twenty, and a lot of towns said, oh, wow, this is. This is an issue. Um, and it's it's definitely something that we're looking at, and that's why this committee is formed. Um, but. We'll we'll get into some more information about that. Um, and the the last thing on the slide I just wanna highlight is that uh, most towns, uh, if they have a hybrid system, they do uh, the hybrid is for electing officials, not for balloting.
Yeah, this is the thing that we found that was interesting when we looked at the research is that when there is. Um, an Australian ballot, the Australian ballot is for people to petition to be on that ballot to be to serve as officers, not for the budget itself. And Danville does it exactly backwards to that.
Yeah.
And we changed into after a twenty ten vote, and it struck us as odd, but we so our hybridization became um, different. And it was very, very, very notable to us.
So uh, next slide for a election of officers. Um, so so one thing um, is. And we have to get a final lawyer verdict on this, but it's written in statute that at floor meetings, you can do introductions for candidates. So this beyond just this is my name and I'm wearing a face sweater or whatever. You can you can do uh. Uh, as much candidacy as you can introduce your candidacy to the extent permitted by the voters at the meeting. So. Um, that that is allowed. I think that's more or less what we used to do up until five years ago, three years ago.
Up until just last, just this last go around. Yeah, it was just this last go around that somebody decided that the rules were different.
Yeah, so and I think that was, I I think we maybe just have conflicting legal advice there, um, so we need to confirm that, but it that looks. That's straight out of state statute, and I think it's pretty clear to me, and it. And it's very common sense, which is one of the nice things about Vermont State Statute is it's. If you can understand it, it's usually very common sense. Um, and uh, if you're going to uh, run for Australian ballot election, you only need thirty signatures. Um, there there is a requirement based on percentage of of population, but it's thirty or percentage, whichever is lower. So it's really not a high bar to get for people who are interested. Um, and then as Clayton just talked about, um, down towards the bottom, there's only as near as we can tell, there's only four towns, if that, that do budgets. Uh, budgets only by Australian ballot the way Danville does. So we're not alone, but it's um, it's we definitely kind of an outlier then. Yes. Uh, next slide. So for uh. Voting in uh, similar towns and cities, and that this is similar to Danville, so about roughly the same size in in, you know, kinda near a a larger hub like downtown, something like that. Um, you can actually, I I made these charts very small on purpose so that you have to kinda swim to look at them. Uh, but the the takeaway I'd like you to to get is that if you, as you look at these these crazy ups and downs, there's not a, uh, there's not a strong downward trend. It's. It, you know, yes, there's definitely years that probably that uh, voting is lower, but there's also years that voting is very much higher. It's all by local issues. Uh, and overall, and here's where I'll give you some specifics, but it's. Take it with a grain of salt. If a town only has floor meeting, then they typically have about thirteen percent of their registered voters turn out for that. Uh, if they have a hybrid system where they do floor meeting and Australian ballot, then you get about eight percent of the voters show up for floor meeting, so less than if you wanna have for me. Uh, but you get about twenty seven percent show up for Australian balloting, so more like roughly two to three times for that. So that's kind of, that's. That's where you're looking, and that's kind of where Danville falls. Uh, next slide. For a specific to Danville Town Meeting history. We found references to, you know, over two hundred years. We we couldn't figure out exactly when the first one is, because we don't have um, pre nineteen ninety nine uh, or pre eighteen hundred uh, town reports, um, at least easily available. Um, but we we've had them for quite a few years. Some of the issues are the same, you know, maybe Rams versus dogs, no wondering, but uh, but similar similar issues, lot of lot of school issues. Um. Uh, for the most part, uh, time being, you know, went just as as four meetings for years in twenty ten. Um, is when we did the petition that Clayton mentioned about changing to Australian ballot. I believe that's the same year the school. Uh, change as well, because the school charter or the school district charter also says that the budget has to be done by Australian ballot. Um. And then uh, and unfortunately, uh, as we're looking for data, uh, you would think the most recent years would be the best, except for the most recent years are not good, because, you know, as as you're probably well aware. Uh, last year, uh, it only became clear we were gonna do a floor meeting, you know, of of.
Less than a month, just about a month and four or five days.
Yeah, and then, of course, the two years before that were COVID. Uh, so. That was weird too, so. Um, next slide. Specific to Danville participation. Uh, uh, the uh, so the uh, the large bars here are total population, not uh, registered voters, but it just shows that. Danville's total population hasn't run up enormously. Uh, but if you look at the smaller bars um, at the bottom that show attendance, you'll see again, there's not a. Uh, it's up and down, but it's not, there's not a precipitous drop uh, in numbers. So it's it's not really dropping. But it's never been really high either. So that's that's one of the things that really we we wanna try to look at.
Two thousand sixteen was also the. The Act forty-six in the merge.
Ah. Yeah.
Cause you're hot.
And that was a, like, cause I was gonna note the, so COVID, uh, the the vote count in COVID uh, was roughly. The number of people voting at by Australian ballot was about six hundred and sixty. Um, but in twenty sixteen, when we had ATVs and that, um, we had seven hundred and six. So we actually had more voters come out during that than even when you mail people.
That would have been the merger of the of uh, the schools.
The issues are big.
Yeah, yeah, and you get even more voters, so. Um, and then I just gave some examples of what's, you know, what's going on when, you know, when there's nothing really exciting going on. Not too many voters when you get apparently, if anyone knows what this was in nineteen seventy-one, there was a big issue with kindergarten, and that got two hundred eighty-three people out to Florida. Um, but. Not that many more than we got.
That was from the churches. Because they're bringing it into the school.
The large, you know, a lot of, a lot of discussion and, yeah, yeah. Uh, so next slide, changing town meetings. Um. So um, there are changes, uh, there are pretty easy changes that you can do um, within the law without. Making any structural, uh, you know, without charter changes and things like that. You can change the, uh, you know, floor meeting day. You can go for the Saturday earlier or change the time. Um, without doing that, you can change to Australian balloting without doing a charter change. Um, just by having a town vote on it, and then it continues in that form until you vote again and say, well, let's not do it by Australian ballot. So it's it's actually pretty easy to do some of those changes. At the moment, we're locked in by our charters. School board and town or school district and town for Australian balloting for budget. Um, but we could go through charter change to change that. So this this just talks about how those processes work.
Uh, next, um, some of the um. Some of the towns, they will vote in May. Their town meeting will be in May instead of um, instead of March. That way we have um. The numbers will come out on their. Their um. On the actual taxes from the state. Mr. Tucker, if you could help.
Is that just for schools, Mark?
For uh, the the second to last bullet on this changing time. Okay.
Caladonia Cooperative Unified District, um, when they were first formed in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, uh. They. The final. The final work to to get that uh. District form didn't actually. Happen until January, and it wasn't time to form a budget. They knew they were gonna be. Time to do a budget in time for town meeting, so they decided as part of their original. Uh, Articles of Agreement to set their vote on first Tuesday in May. Uh, two years ago, they changed it uh, by vote of the communities to the first Tuesday in April. They moved it up a month. And there's been some talk about moving it up another month and getting back on the town meeting schedule, but that was a function of. Act forty-six in the uh.
But Martha, Martha, town meetings go for the regular town planning on the town meeting day.
On town meeting day, right? Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. The I think, cause this is, it gets, this gets really tricky, and I, you know, I'm sure he's correct. Um, the the second uh, the last bullet on the slide ten about changing time meeting, um, but by law are already, and this is one of those easy changes. The school district, the annual school district meeting, which is normally held the same day as the town's time meeting. Um, can be uh, anywhere between February first and June fourteenth. All takes as a town vote. So um, if you wanted to separate it, um. Either as a one-time thing or as a from now on, all you have to do is have a time, but you don't need a charter change or anything like that. You just need to put it up as a question. Public question and then say, shall, you know, shall the, there's actually, I think, proposed language in there. Shall the Danville School District hold its annual meeting on? Boom, uh, and then you keep doing that until you decide not to.
But for participation purposes, that sounds like.
Yeah, the what, part of our research earlier on was that uh, you get much better uh, school district for attendance if you have the school district meeting at the same time as the town meeting, although. Part of our other research is it's it's really hard to sort out uh, school district specific numbers, because, you know. Cause school districts are so different. You have unified school districts, you have summer towns, and it's, you know, it just gets weird. Um, so we're we're doing our best, and actually, if that's one of the things you wanna give us to to research, by all means, you know, let us know and we'll do that, but it's. Um, it's tricky to pull the 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 data.
It's tough to weigh through, because each of the dis- school districts reports to the A O E, and if they don't report, that's also fine.
Yeah.
And so there's a lot of, a lot of places on the on the reports to go to the A O E that they're required to put in that are blank, and they're just blank, and that's just that, and.
And they still get averaged in though.
They get averaged in as 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 a null. And so it's difficult to do that research. I think we all took, put it forward, took a hack at it, so that's how we know.
But we can, we're happy to continue to do. Um.
What we're planning or something?
So, yeah, I keep playing assumptions, and so this is one of the main takeaways. I'm almost, uh, I think I'm almost done. Um, so the these are the big things that we're that the committee is working off of, you know, kinda sum up all the other stuff. So the maximum turnout that we're expecting to be able to get is about forty percent. So that's. You know, that's if we get everybody pretty excited about whatever the topics are. That's what we're looking at, which, you know, and and that's. You can see, think it's good or bad, but it just means that when you talk about missing each is. Yeah, we're already, we're already starting off by missing sixty percent, uh, and we're probably not gonna do any better than that, no matter what we do. Um. The committee, we're trying very hard, and and I'm sure one of the things that we're gonna recommend is switching somehow entirely to Australian ballot. Um, but or not recommended, that'll be an option that we present, but um, the committee, as we, the more we read and the more we research, uh, we we really think that floor meetings serve a public good beyond just the voting. Um, both in that encourages participation, not just at the meeting, but also in committees and and school, school boards and other things. Um, and that in general, just face-to-face discussion of issues, you know, helps helps people learn how to to work with each other um, in in compromise and in thought stability. Um. On the other hand, uh, when you do Australian ballots, that makes it a lot easier for people who who are disenfranchised, um, to to include. Uh, new Vermonters or people who are new to town, uh, who may be, you know, seventh generation Vermonters, but new to Danville. Uh, that that makes them uh, more able to uh, come out and vote, uh, and and feel like they're participating in the process, which is important. So the uh, the bottom line there is is the the bottom line we're we're coming at with a uh, from a committee, it all comes down to striking a balance between franchising, those who can't attend a town meeting day, and giving a meaningful function. Uh, to the people who still. So offering about, you get more people, but all they can say is yes, no, gay, um, and you're still only got a max of forty percent. So that's that's cool. So uh, next slide. The uh, so what we've been tasked with is to come back with a set of recommendations to you, what we need to make, to you, uh, the school board and the Daniel Select Board. To say, these are two or three things that we think we could do as a town that would work for Danville. That would help us get better participation. So the the potential list that we have here right now, you know, floor meeting only, hybrid, you know, what we do now is the Australian ballot for current voting. Uh, or Australian ballot only, that's those are the three main ones. There's a different way that New Hampshire does it. Um, called, it's it's called SB two, if you, that that's just what it's called. Uh, and uh, what they do is they basically have a pre-meeting. Uh, where they talk about what's going to be on the uh, the town meeting warning. Uh, and then a few, like a, was it two months later, six weeks later, um, that that they they use that meeting to set the agenda. Uh, and then in the warning, and they publish the warning, and then they have the meeting where everyone votes, so that if you wanted to make amendments and motions to to change things and stuff like that, you can do that at that pre-meeting. And then have everyone vote on the same thing. That day, cause that's that's what been one of the issues, is that when you're doing Australian balloting, the questions are already set. Uh, you you have no opportunity for when you're doing Australian balloting to go into Australian ballot and say, I'd like to vote for this, but I'd like to remember that, you can't. You just can't do that. Um, we've also got a a number of things that are participation boosters, um, some of which we already do, um, that we would consider modifying those.
That's Mike Concesse's kid.
Oh, yeah. Um. Uh, and uh, those are things, these are things that we think we can do, uh, that will improve attendance and participation, uh, no matter what, and so we should probably do those no matter what, and will the. This committee will end up coming back to you and the select ward and saying, hey, we think we should do these. Regardless, whatever, whatever option we choose to do. Uh, next slide. So the methodology that we're using. You know, the the uh, our charter mission is there in the corner, the lower right corner. Um, our goals are, we're trying to come up with options that will result in good decisions that everyone in town understands. Uh, that maximizes participation by the people that wanna participate, and that increases civic engagement beyond just the town meeting, so that that's kind of the goals that we're looking at for these options. And the approach that we're using is is first off, looking at what are the facts and assumptions that we have, uh, cause you know, this, we've we found out some new things here, uh, and that's what we're briefing on right now. Uh, the next step. After these briefings is uh, for us to go back into those options, uh, identify if there's any others, and then refine those options so that we know exactly what those options are that we're talking about, and so that we're clear that when I say Australian ballot only. You understand, and I understand, and everyone understands exactly what that means. Um. And then, and that's our goal for that is to have that for town meeting day this coming year, so that we can talk to the. To the town meeting about it as well, town meeting and school board meeting, uh, school district meeting about it, uh, to get their feedback. And then step three. Um, is for us to actually refine that down into probably two or three different options and say, okay, here's, here are two or three ways that we think this can work well for Danville. And present those to you as the school board and the select board, and hopefully have you select maybe a couple for the town people to vote on or. Or whatever you wanna do with that information. But the the idea being that. Um, at that point, you've got courses of action with very clear data supporting or or opposing them, um, and a clear understanding of what those things are. Our last or next slide, uh, so the timeline that we're on, so right now for November, uh, highlighted in the red box. Um, we're briefing uh, you and the select board to get your feedback. Um, uh, the step two happens here in December through March, where we uh, we really refine the options, and then uh, step three is where we take the options that we think are good and and. Figure out all the details for those, what those will look like to adopt. Uh. And that's um. Down to that hap- we wanna get that back to you by September is our initial goal, which we think will give you time. If we come to you and the select board in September. Then we think that gives you enough time to say, to figure out what you wanna do with that information as it's given. Uh, and then uh, last slide. Is just for the next slide is discussion guidance, and then that's the last slide, it is just there to give you a bunch of tips that are interesting, um, which which are interesting, uh, but. So that's all that I have.
Thank you, Ben.
I think the one thing that that I would wanna point out to the school board is that we. The the purpose of this committee is not to make change simply for the sake of change. The purpose of this committee is drawn up to increase. Participation and the feeling of participation in Danville at the meetings, and because of last year's meeting, the the resounding. Uh. Voice that we heard from the people that were there was a low number, but they said, we want. Town meeting to happen the way we want town meeting to happen, and so we need more people to come to that meeting, and then we need to figure out how we can get more people to feel like they can participate. At town meeting, however, whether it's in the lead-up, and but certainly in the aftermath of town meeting, when there's still so much work to be done, we need people participating in the community. And but so ultimately, the goal is not to, we're gonna move it to Saturdays, and then that's our action for action's sake. The goal is, if if bringing it to Saturdays helps, then maybe we'll do that, but. What we need is participation from the community and an opportunity to not disenfranchise. So many people. Because that's what we're doing, excluding them.
So someone that at the uh, at town meeting. Um, on the floor. May say, no, we want it on this day, you know, on the floor. Yeah, that's one person wouldn't vote, but if you take it to. Um. The people that aren't attending. Let me say, yeah, we think it should be by Australian ballot. All those people that vote, we wanna buy Australian ballot. All those people aren't gonna vote. Um, regularly. So. A a person on the floor say, no, we want, um, this, this is how I want it. Compared to. Someone says, yeah, this is how we want it. But doesn't do anything other than. Jumping the back, the bandwagon, because it might make sense.
And those are some of the things that really came up through the research, because this is a long time debate and argument and discussion that we've had, you know, for years here, decades here. And that's where people talk about, you know, quality versus quantity, and what are you getting, um, who's participating, but I think ultimately the goal being how can we maximize engagement? And and get people involved, but also keep what we were talking about was like that social piece, that coming together. So that's where we have to get creative, and that's where we're trying to figure out what are the steps we can take to try to. Really facilitate it and make it happen.
And so in some of these towns, there was thirteen percent participation, and they're okay with that. They're not taking any action, and in some towns, there's nine percent participation, and they're saying we have to make a change. And so you just have to figure out what what you're gonna, what you're gonna do, and then some there, so there's some test cases going on about some changes. Those are in Waterford, they changed to a Saturday meeting. We don't know yet what happens on the next Saturday meeting. We don't know yet what happens, so some of the states are gonna come, and if you go back to the timeline on this, you see that we're, this is not of. There's not a quick-moving committee. This is not a committee that's going to recommend an action lickety-split here, and so we're gonna take our time and gather some data, and you'll see a survey is coming up. For the town to get an idea with the people of the town, what the sense is, what the idea is, and we'll try to phrase some questions so that we can gather some specific data. To give a better idea of, do people feel like they're currently participating? What do they think are the barriers to participation? And, you know, just a simple question, how many people are on this, on the school board? How many of the people that that you send a survey to can actually answer that question? And then, you know, whether they can name them or not, I don't know, because at the last meeting, I'm sure Melissa, you've looked here for a very long time, and said, who's that one? Those people that's sitting out there that you recognized. And you knew who they were, and they didn't know who you were, and you've been doing this job, you've been doing this job for a year, and it's just, it's such, it's such, it's such a weird thing. Who's running and how do you spell Glenn? And if we write it down only one end on this piece of paper, does he still get it? And can you tell us he's in a brown shirt or not? You know, it's a, so it's. We want more people to participate, and we wanna find out how to do that without disrupting what are Vermont traditions, but at the same time, sort of goading people into coming forward and being able to say, speak their mind, instead of saying after the meeting. I wasn't allowed to speak my mind, and that's come a few even from members of our own committee. Even people in our own committee have said that it took years for them to be willing to stick their hand up. And say, I have a question.
Yep.
So you can bring it to me, you can send it right to the committee, where I think we're we're on the page, there'll be a survey soon, just let us know where where this comes up. If you have questions, if you have comments, please feel free to send them in.
Yeah, I I think town meeting can really be a gem. I think it has been a secret, wonderful thing that we've just taken for granted forever and let. Be very sleepy and. And so we actually, I think we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to do the research and. Come up with something that stands right for Danville and try things and make it into something more. A little pitch, right? That's the game plan.
All right, so so hopefully, we've we've updated you with our facts and assumptions. Um, uh, I I think. As you might have, the fact that nobody's jumped on my throat, we validated the task that we're we're doing what you think is okay, even though you didn't give us this hash. Um. I would ask if you have any, this is last, uh, and I think we've we've set up a protected schedule that we have, which, uh, again, everyone seems to be on board with. So the last thing I'd just say is, you know, do you have any guidance for us as the. School board, since we're we're putting you in charge of us, but you haven't had any input into this directly uh, to this point.
Right, so as of right now, the this committee has taken all of its um, action from the Select Board, and again, this question came for you guys, and we piggybacked onto their thing. And the debate ended up in our portion of the town meeting, but the debate really was the select. And the debate ended up in our portion of the town meeting, but the debate really was the select portion of the meeting. And so we're, we've sort of been passengers in this for for a while. And I'm not really a passenger anymore since I'm involved in the committee, but I'm I'm watching it go by. And I wish that people, you know, personally, but this is only me, not as a school board member. That people would have to petition to be on the ballot so that we would know in advance who was running, so that we could find out what they were about. And also so we could encourage them to do so, and cause that works so well during the pandemic time. Uh, but we'll see what we get. So if you have other guidance for them, if you think, like, now, if you think. That town meeting should be at night, wait for the survey, because you're 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 one person in that, but if you have some specific guidance. They should look into what X town does, and that's what she would tell them. But if you have a specific individual preference. That survey information more than guidance information. Anybody, any questions?
I think we're assuming silence is consent.
So what was the consent agenda, no questions. Mark, anything? You don't have to.
No.
This, this report has been received. Awesome. Great. Thank you very much, and I move. Public, public input up to the beginning.
Thank you.
So we're gonna go to public input next, Allison, my minister is not here yet, so. I'm gonna go ahead and ask if anybody in the room has any public input.
Thank you, and this is obviously outside of this, this is my own, thank you guys, thank you, not related at all, my own thing, yeah. And I'm not here to talk about masks, you guys will be very happy about that, I think we've moved on from all that hopefully. Um, but two things that I just care about, and I know you guys obviously are here because you care about the kids in the school, and I just wanted to make sure you were aware. Um, I don't know if you guys saw this, it's the ACLU, um, American Civil Liberties Union, but it's digital dystopia. And it's not totally relevant right now to Vermont because we don't have the numbers here with the students, but. Right now, the ed tech industry is like insanely predatory in a lot of the big schools. And I just wrote a thing in the paper about it, but to me, it was just really important, and this is for you guys. And it's just, you know, when do you cross the line of, you know, invasive surveillance that's not helpful for children? And so I thought they did an amazing job, there's um, states that are starting to ban. Some of the actions being sold by the ed tech industry, and to me, I just felt like it was important for you guys to have, I hope it will never come here because there's not a lot of. Um, we don't have the numbers to sort of satisfy.
Sure.
You know that, and right now, there's, I think, a little bit more um, common sense or respect away around the way cameras are used, it's mostly. Outside to prevent vandalism, some schools are going inside, and there's some real big sort of debate on that, like Harwood had a big thing. Um, that went on, um, I know Saint J just put in, what was it, like fifty-six cameras, there were like thirty-some inside and. There was some pushback, they had some more that they added outside, et cetera. So anyway, it's just having the conversation about when does it become harmful or invasive? To the children, and so I wanted you guys to have that, so that's one thing real quick.
Okay.
I'm gonna did just write something in the paper about that, just that had some info. And the second thing was, I don't know if you guys saw, you probably did, um, Williamstown. They just put wifi on the buses, I don't know if you guys saw that at all, yeah, and so. I wrote a thing about that too, because these are the things that concern me, but this year, I can't give you this because it cost me way too much to print. This is New Hampshire Legislative Commission on. This is the most comprehensive study that I've ever seen on environmental and health effects with evolving wireless technology, and it is. An amazing amount of research, I can send you guys all a link in in your spare time, haha, you can check it out. But um, but mostly, I just wanted you guys to be aware that there, in particular, was testimony given by, um. He's a medical doctor up at McGill University, he teaches in Department of Toxicology. And his whole thing is, if you radiate a car, you are totally intensifying radiation, and that is absolutely environment. Environmental pollution and a real toxic threat, especially when you talk about kids who have skulls that are developing, they're not like a two hundred, you know. Pound male with like a thick full, you know, skull that's developed, you're talking about children with developing skulls. And there's tremendous evidence looking at harms of wireless. And I know it's not something you can see and people blow it off, but there are massive amounts of scientists who study this and organizations. Who are really pushing back on the FCC, the Federal Communications. And the FDA, um, to try to get, how do you get children um, protected from that? And and wifiing a bus. Is one of the most dangerous things, and there's actually research on that. And the other last thing is, one of the things that came out of this New Hampshire committee. And I want to put it to you guys, and I also probably talk about it more in the school, new school committee, is all of the recommendations. Like France has this recommendation, many Eastern European countries have this recommendation, um. It was came out of the New Hampshire Legislative Commission, but it was all about um, wired. Wired in schools, like they banned it in nursery schools, like no wifi in nursery schools in France, for example, like, so a lot of countries and states are really starting to look at it. But it's just trying to get the info out, and I care about kids, I know you guys care about kids, I just wanted you guys to have that info. Okay, so that's for you, and I'll send you this, so in your spare time, you can back it up, that's perfect, thank you, okay, thank you guys, mutual.
Allison, before you go. You said, Allison, it's Mark, um, do you have that ACLU's paper in electronic form?
I do, I can send it to you.
Would you email it to me?
Yeah, I'll make sure you guys all get that one too, and then there's a hard copy, I'm such a hard. And there's a hard copy, it's well worth.
Thank you.
Being prepared and having info helps.
Any more public input?
Um, I mean, we have, yeah, we have two people, but I don't know, Katie or Lance. Katie White or Lance Horn? If you want to speak, you can raise your hand and I'll.
Okay, moving on. Uh, I'm looking at the minutes from October the third next. The October the third meeting was our regular meeting of the school board, I looked the minutes up, I reviewed them when she wrote them. Um, does anybody have any questions about those? I'll entertain a motion. I gotta tell, it is six thirty-five, I'm gonna remind that from morning, six thirty-five. So a motion from Tim, six thirty-five, to approve the minutes from ten-three, can I get a second here? Second here, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye. October twelfth is the meeting of the um. The building, the building committee, those minutes went out as well, that's where we talked about the survey and what actions we can and can't take. Everybody have a chance to go through those? I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Here we go. Thank you, all second please.
Second.
Second from Tim. All in favor of approving those minutes? Thank you, those minutes are approved. Two minutes, uh, we're going to do administrative reports, um, we'll start with Mark. Mark, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the floor, welcome back, nice to see you. Tell us.
We'll be back, um. So. It was a sharp report this month, Anna and I collaborated on it, um. The. See, the two things, one thing I want to talk about, actually, that's not in here, I did send out, um. I did email out the report, the FCA, functional, some, I can't, I don't have the acronym down yet. When the school, school study committee, the AOE School Study Committee. Emailed that out to all of you yesterday, I don't expect anybody's had time to read it, it's not an action item for tonight. I will tell you that, um, Sean's already gone through. Uh, the Danville report and it didn't flag any like significant errors and oversights. Uh, or misstatements of condition of the building, there shouldn't be any surprises in there, we already know. A lot about the condition and challenges of the building. Um, I I want to emphasize again, because I've gotten questions back from some not Daniel Board members, but other boards about. The tox data that's in that report, don't. Agonize over it because the methodology is not real world methodology. We're just gonna leave that at that, and it's gonna be some clarification around there.
There was one mark that, um, right away Molly, Molly flagged on, and it was that you could replace an air handler for fifteen thousand dollars, and that is simply not.
Uh, it's just, you know, so, yeah. I don't know where, I don't know how they came up with those costs, it was another. You know. That's what I'm saying, don't, don't look at the costs in there, they're they're not real world.
Out for fifteen thousand dollar, that's what I said.
You might be able to buy an an air handler unit. But that for fifteen thousand dollars, but then you've got to engineer it, you've got to install it, you've got to wire, you've got to do all that stuff, and none of that's reflected in. In in their express cost for uh, replacing an air handler, so that's, that's where this. Report is not going to be useful in terms of helping anybody figure out what what you're gonna have to spend to do any kind of renovation. So, I mean, other than that, um, you know. Unless there's any questions on anything that's in the written report.
Other questions here, there's a couple of things, we're gonna restart negotiations with support staff here pretty soon at the CCSU level, this will, you'll hear about that as we go along. That's the decision, nothing super important to do, and um. Mark, can you tell us a little bit more about the hoax in Twinfield, just, just to clarify for everybody?
Um, yeah, um, so. At the beginning of October. One of the, one of staff members at the school received an email at the, at that person's school address. It said something to the effect of. If I shot up this school on October eighteenth, do you think you'd survive? That was the only thing in the message, to my knowledge. Uh, if if anybody's, if the FBI or the state police have ever tried, traced the source of that message, they didn't, they haven't told us. We went through, the school went through a couple of agonizing weeks. Uh, preparing for that, um. The eighteenth came and went, nothing happened. Uh, one of the things that is in the written report was the, the training that Anna and I went to, um. That was uh, the threat assessment training, it was put on by uh, the FBI office in. Boston, it was specifically related to hoax threats. It was addressed or geared more towards law enforcement, but one of the. Things that they said in that, uh, in that training is that there's never been a single school shooting in the United, or a single mass shooting in the United States. Where the shooter identified the specific target in advance. Uh, and that was meant to, uh, I think to educate law enforcement on as a flag for, if you get a very specific threat on a very. You know, on a location on a certain date, that you're probably looking at a hoax and you should, you know, but. All of that said, there's, you know, it upset the school community and it was, uh, it was disruptive and people were concerned and we had. A lot of kids out at the school on the eighteenth and nothing happened, and now we're, we're back in session and. You know. Wait, they're they're licking their wounds, there's still some residual angst about that.
I think that's what struck me the most is that it wasn't a credible threat, and it it just, it's such a disruption for what turns out to be just some malicious act. That doesn't have them, it it has malice in it, but not the kind of malice that they say they have, but certainly malice.
Right. Well, we had some, something similar happened in Vermont, uh, last fall, a year ago. Where like twenty-two schools, uh, received on the same day and within the same hour. Or police departments, reports of active shooters in a school building. And it just, you know, Montpelier was one of them, Montpelier High School. Was one of them that was the target of one of those hoax threats, the Montpelier Police Department received it. The school didn't receive it, and the school didn't know anything was going on until. The Montpelier Police Department SWAT team broke in their door. Crashed the door, came into the building. So it's meant to disrupt, uh, you know, and be upsetting, and it. It's effective in that sense, and I don't mean that in a positive way, but it does have that effect on people, but. It seems to be a pattern, and a lot of these, um, a lot of these are when they can trace them, they're tracing them to overseas sites. So. Um, if if they are able, excuse me, to trace the source. Would they let you? Know that that it was done, they they probably won't tell us. Where it was coming from, but will they at least say, we know where it came from and we're taking action against it, or just? I I don't know the answer to that question, Dave, I would like to think that they would. Tell us that much, just as a source of release, um, so that we would know that some, you know. They tracked it down and caught somebody. Uh, if they have, we haven't gotten that message yet, and you know, um, we haven't followed up. With the state police in the last couple of weeks to see if there's any more information. Now, they were very supportive, they were in the school building, they were there on the eighteenth, um, presence around the campus, um. And, uh. But in terms of figuring this out, they didn't hold out a lot of hope that they were gonna find it. Or find out where it came from. Very, thank you.
Good, everybody? Alright, next up is Student Services Report, um, Acting Superintendent Anne Landry doing double duty, she's got some more information for us. You might have any questions for Anne, if you do, you can pass them back to Mark, or you can email Anne directly or ask them here, and we can get them asked to her. Are there any questions? No, no, okay, Principal's report. Did everybody have a chance to read the Principal's report? Does anybody have any questions about the Principal's report? You want to tell us about, um, the the fair? The visit, we try to figure out to recruit students?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we've done a few of them, so, yeah, we're, we're making the rounds on the circuit, um. Simon Fisher and I have taken two students to most of them, which is really effective, I think. Um, we're presenting to students, not parents, that's a really important distinction to make in these, um. So we have a slideshow that we're highlighting all the programs at the high school, and then we brought two students who have taken two pretty different paths. To graduation, and one's a senior and one's a junior. One is working on an internship and has fulfilled all his, or most of his high school requirements at this time, and the other is going a very um, traditional. College track and taking dual credit courses and that kind of thing, so they get to speak to their experiences to the eighth graders, which I think is really powerful. It's a lot of um, adults talking to kids at these things, and we're the one school that's bringing students and giving like a really authentic. Um, not super high-tech, but authentic presentation to kids and letting them know who we are, so. I feel really great about how we did at the Kingdom East Choice Fair specifically too, that was a um. A really long event, an hours-long event with multiple schools from. Far and wide, um, presenting to the students, and I really felt like ours was one that was very personal and. Um, hopefully effective, but we're making the rounds, um, we're gonna be going to Waterford next, we went to the Saint J School. Last week, we've been to Barnett, so we're, we're making the rounds, um, and we have a couple of. Visits coming up, um, this week and next week, so. We're excited to host those students, and then. Um, we've had gear up in the building and they've been working with kids getting ready for college and working on, um, we have. Thursday of this week is the FAFSA Information Night, so that'll be really good. Um, college fairs, Simon's taking kids all over the place, um, and then. New in the report this month, and I'd like to continue to highlight it, it's just what's happening in classes. Around the high school, I just, um. You know, I know we'll talk about Kaylee maybe in a, in a couple of items, but um. I really want student voice and student activity to be more present at our board meeting, so I'd love to have. You know, a musical performance at some point, you know, brief things, but then, or students come from class and show you what they're doing in soar, or present something that they've created and build. But for for right now, I just wanted to highlight what's going on, um. And a couple of our, uh, we might call more traditional classes, we have atmospheric science. And chemistry there highlighted, we have also a couple of dual credit classes where the teachers just let me know. Kind of where we're at and what they're up to, so we have an SNHU Calc and an SNHU Statistics course running this semester. Um, kids are doing really well in those, highly engaged and doing great work, and then geometry as well. We also have, um, courses that are at such a high level that we have. Kids from other schools coming to attend virtually, so we have a Cabot student coming to attend a high-level math class. Because they just don't have the numbers to be able to support that themselves, so I think Danville's doing a really nice job. Being a, a face school that's serving the community. Um, there's a write-up there from Nick Whites in terms of what Build is doing, they are really focused on community-based projects. That's the whole purpose of Build, the names are confusing, I think, we have Building Trades. Which is Zach Baker, and so that's your traditional, like a taste of everything, carpentry and electrical and welding, and then we have. Build, which is part of Danville Works, and that is the more community-based, really project-based learning, like what's a problem in our community that we can solve? And how do we build or create something to solve that? So for instance, they just recently built. Ramps over, kind of like little mini bridges on our trail in the back, because there were just some, all the rain we had. There are some just rutted out muddy points, and they were like, it makes more sense to just build something over this than to keep filling it. Um, those sorts of things, and they did a great job also supporting Fright Night as well, creating games, carnival-style games for them. Um, the Science of Outdoor Adventure and Recreation Class has been working on how to make. Fires outside, and then they got to coordinate, which I know, right? Um, all supervised, and then they coordinated with our cooking teacher Suzanne. Um, all supervised and then they coordinated with our cooking teacher Suzanne Podhiser and then they actually made. The smores were amazing. Um, they made their own graham crackers in cooking class and their own marshmallows. And had chocolate and then were able to go and coordinate with the SOAR kids to create fire and. Cook their smores outside and do all that themselves. So, um, really cool just to see that collaboration among the classes. Is that diversity in what's happening at our high school?
Any questions?
Are the Danville Works kids, are they going off campus or are they mostly doing all of it here?
A lot of it is here on campus. Oftentimes they'll go to, um. Which one? Thank you. Joe's Pond. It's like Lake Pond down there. Um, they'll go to Joe's Pond. That's where they do a lot of, um. A lot of things in like the nicer weather, so.
But they're not going to take a business or doing, there was an internship piece at one point, I thought.
Yeah, so we do, we do have a career class and then we do have compass, which is more that internship and career. So I can picture that next month too, so you can kind of see. And we have a student who runs her own business. Right now, very successfully, um, and there are students who are working. In other, other places.
And I think what you're thinking of is they went and. Um, like they went to Blackthorn Forge, um, last year and they still are doing some of that stuff where they're going to, um, businesses.
Okay, that's all Danville Works programming?
Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, like they had a big field trip where they went to Cabot and Ben &amp; Jerry's and. Uh, Chocolate Factory, like all these relatively local spaces just to see how their businesses. Run and like that side, so not just to do the tour like you or I would, but to really get the whole picture of the sourcing of their products and. Yeah, it's really neat. Yeah.
Any further questions? Well, so that's the end of administrative reports. Uh, there is no student report. Let me do that after a while here. I can do the budgets.
I can't, I can't sit on it. I'm up with the wifi. My wifi's not working on here. Is there a password?
I have, I have it. Um, there is a password. I don't have it right on. But there's two passwords. I can't say it out loud or at a meeting, but if I say it out loud, then. The movie.
That's fine.
If the guest network's up, it doesn't require a password, does it, Sarah?
Yeah, that's what, usually it hasn't in the past and for some reason it is right now, but that's okay. I can do handle the notes. That's okay, it's fine.
But.
No, it's not a big deal.
Let me, let me see if I can find it. Hold on. Give me, give me like two seconds.
I have to watch the video anyway, cause I missed the first part of it.
You missed ten minutes and none of it you have to watch. That's, they sort of had the setups, they don't have to watch them. Uh, let me find wifi. Everybody, hold on, everybody that's watching, Katie and Katie and Lance, just bear with us.
I got it. That's, thank you. That's ninety percent.
So we're gonna go to preliminary FY twenty-five budget and I'm gonna go to Mike and Sessi and Mark. I sort of need you to walk us through it. Mike, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Great. Thanks for coming, Mike.
Yep. So hopefully everybody got the packages sent out in advance. I will try to focus on. What's driving the increases for this year from? Fiscal twenty-five versus fiscal twenty-four? Okay, see if I can show my screen here. Sorry, that's working on. Alright. I know this is small, I'm gonna try to blow it up. This is also on the reserve page. Maybe this is the better page to use here. So. What's driving the increases in this year's, you know, first pass draft at the budget? Um, let's start with number one. We've got, you know, an additional two-point-two FTEs. Built into the, to the budget.
Mike, we're, we're not seeing that screen. It's on the reserve page right now.
Yeah, so let's do this. Let's try this again. Is this not what you're seeing?
I see top increases FY.
Oh, it's up at the top of the page. I'm sorry. My apology.
Okay, that's alright. So I'm trying to break out here, you know, he- here's the increases. Here's the FTEs that make up some of those increases. Here are the ending reserve balances and then I added just a little bit down here of, you know, what we've spent in capital expenditures in the last couple of years. Um, you know, on infrastructure facility-related items. So. Let's just start with, you know, we have two additional FTEs. And, you know, these were previously grant-funded under ARPESR.
So these are both high school teachers?
No, so. Um, there's a, it's, there's a literacy intervention position, um, and then the other one should be the cooking position. Um, so it says the same thing twice, but.
They are both point six.
So the literacy interventions is a point six.
Yeah.
The culinary teachers are pointing to this. And so that makes like one point two.
And then there's a one point O.
There's a one point O and that is another Danville Works position, correct?
Yes, that is a classroom teacher.
So that's a classroom position for high school kids and that's a point six, high school kids and a point six for upper.
Fifth or ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so, so just stating that, uh, these were previously grant-funded and now they, you know, obviously have made an impact. Adding value and we wanna keep them. And therefore that adds. And so the comp and ben, uh, of those two-point-two FTEs is one-seventy-five. So that's explanation number one. Uh, explanation number two. Um, total comp is up two-fifty-six, but you back away the additional FTEs. Um, their comp portion, you're left with one-forty-four. And obviously, um, you know, that's really related to the new collective bargaining agreement. Um, and the increases for the license and the support staff. Then we have healthcare, lovely healthcare, up sixteen-point-four percent higher than our original estimate when we did twelve-point. Seven and I thought that was high. Um, unfortunately, we had to go back and, and re-add and we did, um. So total healthcare is up two-fifty, but of course you back away the additional two-point-twos. That are being added, your health care's two-hundred thousand. So right there, those big three. There's five-nineteen of your, you know. What is the total increase here? Hold on.
Six-thirty-seven, Mike.
Well, that's six-thirty-seven that I'm showing. The total for everything here. Sorry, is six-seventy-eight. So this explains ninety-four percent of that increase. That's what the six-thirty-seven is. Alright. So we've got vocation tuition increase up. Uh, last year, we under-budgeted. I wanna make sure we don't do that again. When I say last year, I mean the, the fiscal twenty-three. Um. We have some increases obviously in books, supplies and a little bit of travel. And lastly, the after-school program. So these are your total increases. That make up the six-thirty-seven and that explains ninety-four percent of the total variance of. Why the budget is up. So these are your main drivers. Are there any questions? Or discussion?
You wanna open the board of questions?
I'm just curious, how many kids are in the after, take advantage of the after-school programs?
We don't have enough, we don't have enough people to handle all the kids, my understanding.
Staffing.
That was, that was a interim thing. We hired a couple more staff. So there's thirty kids signed up, um. Right now, they're not all there every day, um.
For thirty kids, how many staff do you need?
You need, um, three. If all thirty were there, because it's a one-to-twelve ratio, I believe, or one-to-thirteen. And then they, they have it scheduled so that. You know, they start the day with X amount and then there's not that many kids and staff leave. Uh, but we still like to leave two just for safety reasons because. At times, they're the only two in the building, really, um, so.
Okay, um, have questions? So we don't know yet, the tax impact on anybody, this is just the expenses. We don't have a CLA. We don't have the yield. We're not sure we're gonna have those yet. That was my first thing to point out. Um, this, this draft has no changes in staffing, just movement from. Positions that currently exist to where they're, how they're built, with the only change being at this level, the, a cost of an assistant superintendent added on as well. Which is in this budget somehow, budgeted somewhere.
It's just the way it's funded, that's all. So, so you're right. The total number of staff hasn't changed, just they were grant-funded previously. Now, unfortunately. ARPESR is expiring and therefore we have to fund locally, yep.
Alright, my next question is this draft also incl- has no.
Or not funded.
Right.
We have two choices, not just one.
Right, in this draft, that I'm told, that, that we're being shown. The only change is that what we're being shown is the same number of staff, just built differently.
Yeah, in this draft.
Yeah, in this draft. We're not cutting any programming at the high school though.
Correct.
Are either of you building principals anticipating any retirements or any other loss of staff coming up that you're currently aware of?
Are you saying retirements and include like as attrition?
Oh, or just in general, of staff that we might need to make new hires that might commit at different salaries?
Yes, yeah.
That's all I need to know. Okay, um, and positions that are being moved from ESTR to locally funded in this draft are two-point-two.
Correct, yes.
Are any positions being moved from any other grants to locally funded? Specifically, um. I guess I'm looking at title funds. There was, there was a lot of talk last year about title funding and title. Money that wasn't gonna come to us anymore. And so in this draft. Are we looking at any positions that have moved from title funding to local fund?
No, um, so we, we were under the impression that our waiver for title funds expired at the end of this full year. Um, Des Hertz, the curriculum director, communicated with the state and they said we are good through.
Twenty-twenty-five, yeah, through the, into the next one.
So that. The, that. Should cover us.
Okay. And, uh, my last question is gonna be about equalized pupils, but we don't call them equalized pupils anymore and I'm, um. We don't know yet the equalized people number for this school, for the upcoming school year or this school year. Is that right with the people waiting? It's now they're not a weighted average daily membership. We don't yet know any numbers.
We don't have that.
Okay.
That's December, hopefully.
Okay.
Um. I had a question about the athletic director positions and how. I know it looks like it's the same thing as what we did this year with the position going to CCSU but being billed back to Danville. Um. I'm just wondering about, about that, you know, with the two positions, again. You know, are they, are they through CCSU and should they use the allocation model that? We use for the other, uh, funding that goes through CCSU.
Those, can I address that? Can I respond to that? The, uh. Because our, those two positions were not moved to the SU level. Uh, there, we had some talk about that before I went out on leave. It didn't happen, um. I guess because I was on leave, um, but even if we had moved those positions into the CCSU budget. Because those positions, those two positions benefit. Cabot, uh, Danville and Twinfield, you would be. You would be, you would be paying for those. You wouldn't, the other four or the other schools wouldn't be responsible for any of the costs related to those positions. Because they're not benefiting.
But I'm, I'm wondering what the financial benefit is to Danville to merge with Twinfield and Cabot.
It's not about a financial benefit, it's about having, um, sustainable. Sports activities across the three schools, um. Danville, for the first time, uh, this, this last spring. Wasn't able to field a, a girl softball team and so they did a cooperative agreement to play. Softball on the Twinfield Cabot team, um. The Cabot and Twinfield this year could not field their own girls soccer team, so their. Girls that wanted to play came over and played with Danville. That is the trend. In high school athletics and I've been talking with Randy about that, about this extensively. And nobody sees it going. You know, right now we're able to, to continue to maintain independent. Boys' high school basketball programs in, in Twinfield Cabinet, which is a combined program in, in Danville. But, uh. You know, the numbers of, uh, of students in general that want to participate in sports continues to drop. Uh, across all three schools. So. So this whole question about. An athletic director, an assistant athletic director kinda got forced on us in the last minute. That kinda did get forced on us in the last minute. In August, when the athletic director that Cabot and Twinfield was, uh, paying for. Left. He just like, he gave us, he barely gave us a week's notice and said, I'm leaving and left us in the lurch. Just when we were trying to get these cooperative teams underway. Um, Randy couldn't take it on by himself. We found somebody, uh, who was willing to step in, um. And, uh, take over those responsibilities and we decided that was an opportune moment to look at. Changing the model slightly and to, I guess, elevate Randy to athletic director. And the person that's paid for, uh, by Cabot and Twinfield is identified as, as an assistant director. And they're working together. But right now, Danville's paying Randy's salary and Cabot and Twinfield is paying salary for the assistant director. But if I'm getting to your question.
Yeah, um, did Twinfield have, was it a full-time athletic director they were paying for before?
Yes.
They were splitting with Cabot. They were splitting a full-time director with.
They were splitting with Cabot because Cabot and Twinfield have cooperative remember-to-member teams. Uh, across the board, so they were sharing. Uh, sharing the costs in a, in a ratio, I think it was two-thirds, one-third, based on school size.
Cabot doesn't have a varsity program. Period.
Cabot doesn't have a varsity basketball program. They have a varsity soccer program. I mean, they, they, Cabot rescued the Twinfield soccer, boy soccer program because they had numbers of Twinfield in that. And, and Twinfield rescued Cabot in the sense of opening up a member-to-member opportunity for the few boys that wanted to continue to play basketball from Cabot. So this is, you know, this is, we're like in the fourth year of that arrangement with Cabot and Twinfield. And we're, we've about gone through a full year of this between Danville's involvement, first with girls, uh, softball and now with. Uh, girls soccer.
So just in this budget. We pay for athletic director. Randy.
Full-time. Is there an increase there with that salary for the tax or extra time he's spending?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay if we can't discuss it, if it's, you know, personnel.
No, 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 I want, I, I interrupted you in the middle of your question.
No, it's okay. I'm, I'm trying to get at is, is, um, basically are we paying for, I don't wanna sound like I'm not collaborative, but. Is Danville paying more of its share than the other two schools? Um, for services?
I don't think that, no, let me, let me, Mike, let me take this. Let me take this, please. Um, there's a couple of things going, there's a couple of things going on here. First of all. Randy's been, I think that Randy's been underpaid for a number of years for this scope of responsibility that he had just for Danville School. And I've been talking to him about it. Randy's maybe the only one of two. Athletic directors in the state of Vermont that runs a K-to-twelve program. The other one, surprisingly, I just found out it's up in Richard High School. Okay, outside, I think it's in Montgomery, um. So that's an unusual configuration. He's been doing that for, for a nu- for a number of years since he came on full-time. I mean, maybe even a little bit before that. So that's a, that's an unusual span of responsibilities. I would say, and, and I think he's been underpaid and I'm having, I'm in the mid, middle of a conversation with him about what. What he and I think is inadequate salary for that scope of responsibility. In terms of what else he, is he? In terms of what else he is he. What else is he taking on because of this arrangement of a director and assistant director? It's incrementally not that much more, he is because he has. Uh, because he has a title of director and he has national credentials to be an athletic director, he is. He does have primary oversight and responsibility for what the assistant director does, but they, but. They both work in the other school, Randy goes to Cabot and Twinfield sometimes. Uh, Dana comes out here, one of the things I found out yesterday is that Dana's been cutting the grass at Danville. As part of his, as part of his contract, something that I've just found out literally yesterday and I've got some issues around that. He's doing field maintenance on behalf of Danville, so you know, we can, you know, we can. You know. Picket this and 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 say that, you know, and and argue about who's. Who's doing more work or who's paying more, but there's there's a sharing of responsibilities. And the way that it's structured is that there will be times in theory where you might see Dana here overseeing. A boys' basketball game during the winter months because Randy's not available. Um, and and that's that's a function of a shared model that you can support with a director and assistant director.
I think what we're getting at here though is they're very clearly working for the district and so if they're working for the district. Because they're going between schools, then it should probably be moved at some point. To the superintendent level because at that point they're a district level employee and so that way we can guarantee. That we're splitting the cost of what they're doing, especially because we're now saying. We can expect to see them here and them there doing it. I think that that's sort of what what we're getting at here is that long term. That's probably something we need to see happen.
I think I agree with you Tim and and if I had not been on leave, that would have happened this year. That fell through the cracks while I was out, it didn't get moved to the SU budget, but that said, at the end of the day, the actual cost. Even if they were sitting up as SU sitting up at the top of the heap as SU employees, the actual cost would be allocated back. Directly to Cab- Cabot, Twinfield and Danville only. And so you would, I don't think you would have seen a significant variance in in how much Danville was gonna pay versus how much. Cabin and Twinfield was gonna pay, we can't assess those costs to schools that don't benefit from.
Yeah, I think it's not to nitpick this Mark, but I think there's a perception that Danville is um. Supporting other towns, we have, you know, we're glad to have Peachum kids come and um use the gym and be on our teams, but I think. Um, you know, there's costs with programming, there's costs with field maintenance and. Um, if if it's our model to be that for the region and. Be supportive and collaborative, that's one thing, but I just wanna be clear with the community about. Um, making sure we're also, you know, looking out for Danville too in this.
So I think Mark, the issue that she's bringing up that that you may not realize that she's bringing up is the elementary issue for the local towns, not the high school issue. Is that our elementary programs, uh, and some of the middle school programs, kids from CCSD and kids from Peachum School District. Both participate in our programs and then we pay. And that's a longstanding issue with the Danville Athletic Director and the Danville Athletic Program. And so if this um athletic director position and co athletic director position were to go to CCS to the CCSU level. There'd probably have to be some work in factoring in average daily membership of sports. And to to be a more fair allocation of the people to use our facilities, which you can't do in the current modeling. And like you say, it fell through the cracks and this may not be that Twinfield and Cabot. Are necessarily the people benefiting from it because it seems like they're gonna be paying more. For less limited programming because Randy's working more because he's doing pre K through twelve or K through twelve anyway. But what, when you go to the SU modeling, there's probably gonna have to be pretty extensive modeling to make it fairer. For the children who are in elementary school that use our facilities and our programs that are not currently paid. But that's not the Cabot and Twinfield kids because they go club.
Alright, so that's it, so you're raising an issue that's that's not been on my radar.
Goes one step further and I I talked about it at CCSU meeting. And I confused a lot of CCSD people who didn't think that any of their kids ever participated in our programs, but they do.
Yeah.
And but so there's the. We're 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 into the minutia of how budgets are perceived. But again, this is perception becomes reality is that we are carrying Peachum Sports. Peachum has no sports, we kid Peach kids from Peachum wanna play sports, they come playing Danville and they pay they pay nothing. And so, and it's great to have them, nobody thinks it's not great to have them. They leave their sweaters on our fields and we have to pay somebody to pick the sweaters up.
Yeah, and I think the Twinfield Cabot piece, Mark, just plays, you know, it just kind of brought this all back up about. What and we have the building, it's like, what is Danville getting? You know, we can't support the region, we we have needs ourselves, we have a small tax base and I think. That's what I'm hearing, um, is how we're gonna be kind of fair to Danville.
Overall, with this with athletic director position between Twinfield, Cabot and Peachum, Danville probably ultimately benefits. From having a second life competent body doing the work. And which is good, but we just wanna make it seem fair so that when we go to explain it to people.
Right.
And when specifically board members are leaning over a fence at a a thing, they can watch their kid play and not have somebody tap them on the shoulder and ask them, that kid doesn't live here.
Right.
So that's a whole, that's a whole.
It's a can of worms.
Broader issue for this guy.
Yeah, it 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 is, but I I like to just make a quick comment uh to the collective uh board. I I look at this with with a different lens and and the lens is. You know, there there are other ways besides going in adding people at the SU level to reallocate right back. To to certain schools. That you could be a usage model, so uh to use certain facilities could come at a at a small cost. And we would build back the school district, that's one way to address elementary. Uh, sports, if that if that in fact is is is. Being perceived as a very expensive uh offering that Danville does. Another way to look at this also is to say. The schools that might be causing angst as far as usage and participation, I look at that more on the recruiting side. Because Peachum is school choice after sixth grade. Uh, and if if the lack of involvement, it let let's say you wanna go to a billable model. And and the Peachum town says we're not doing it, we'll figure out a different solution. Now you've now you've basically shunned away potentially. Uh, future middle school and high school kids at twenty-two thousand dollars a pop and with declining enrollment. And the humongous drop, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, when we get to revenue. And enrollment, I don't think that's a battle we wanna talk about, but I'm just throwing my two cents in there.
I think that's why probably people aren't talking about a billable model and we're talking about an S. U level model, because then. Then it's not about, well, we don't wanna pay for that, we don't wanna participate there because it's an SU level model, it would be an SU level decision. That would.
Yeah.
Like I said, if it, you know, if I hadn't gone out on leave, we might have addressed all of these things, these are all good discussion points.
Right, and I.
Because it was my intention to move it to the SU level and it didn't.
Right, and for this year, that's a problem for next year.
Right, I don't think we need to sit here and beat the dead horse, but I think the the point is made and I think that it. We're on record as saying we're acknowledging that this is something that needs to be addressed. Or even if the the difference is minute, even if the. It actually ends up costing us minutely more, at least we can say we've done the math and we've made sure that that the the balance is there. And I think that that's.
Yeah.
The. The part that Molly.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Not to speak for you.
No, that's great, perfect, we can wrap it up.
Alright, moving on.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll go back to Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, um, so that explains the expenses, if we get to the revenue. Um, last year we estimated, I think it was forty. So the the enrollment for incoming tuition students is dropping, it was forty-five and twenty-three. Forty and twenty-four, then I'm modeling thirty and twenty-five, so that's a reduction of a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, in incoming tuition. Yep, no problem. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
So we've got a drop of tuition revenue. Based on a reduced number of incoming kids is coincides with the enrollment issues. Interest is up because interest rates have almost tripled, that's good, um, we're not gonna be able to to deplete another hundred and eighty thousand. From the special ed uh reserve, so that is a reduction of revenue between, you know. Tuition and the carry forward balance that we use, you know, local revenue is down three fifteen. Just wanted to highlight the obvious. So, um, I just, that's it, that's all I got for right now, we don't really have much to talk about from an interest rate. Or anything else until all the numbers are released from the state, but this is um. A first pass it, what's the cost drivers are and the reduction of revenue that we're currently seeing?
Okay, so this is discussion only because again, this is this is not the budget, this is the expenses, we don't know anything else passed here. We need to start seeing in the December meeting, we're gonna see, um, hopefully a lot more information about. What the cost is, how the state intervenes, the state's aware that this is happening, the state's aware that costs are up. We'll see how the yield works out, we'll see how the CLA works out and then we'll know where we have to go, I can tell you that these numbers are high. I'll tell you principals, I'll tell you the superintendent, these numbers are high, they may be too high. And you guys wanna say anything else? We'll leave it there.
I agree with that, yeah.
I am, I agree. Can I, can I ask a question though? Uh, because there is, you know, I'm sitting on a request to. Use some S or grant money to buy additional equipment for, um. You know, for Danville Works and for the culinary program. I don't wanna spend that money if you're going to yank those out of the budget and I. You're gonna say we don't know yet, but I just wanna give you a heads up that I'm not gonna spend. Money, I'm not gonna put the the equipment money into those two programs is to have you cancel the programs. Doesn't make, it doesn't make financial fiscal sense to do that, you understand what the concern is?
I can, yeah, I can understand you, I. Those programs are viable, those programs are working, kids are participating in those programs, we don't wanna cut them. We don't, at the same, we, I don't. If it if it comes in, like, if it comes in and the number says a dollar seventy-two, I gotta cut something, right? It was a dollar forty-six last year, if it's a dollar seventy-two and I'm just looking at a dollar seventy-two with an eight million dollar. Budget and I see that, I'm gonna have to come back to you and say something, if it's a dollar fifty-one, maybe I can go and I can say say to somebody five cents. And then my argument is five cents, my argument not a million dollars and thirty cents. And so I know it's easy to say to people, you don't pay the whole note, you don't toke this whole note, you you're on income sensitivity or whatever. And the state covers sixty-eight percent of this anyway. We can do it, we need to educate these kids, because we do need to educate these kids, these elective courses are what's gonna bring in tuition students. If we can do it, so we would like to not cut those. Uh, if you could twiddle your thumbs on not spending the money or spending the money until the CLA comes in, it'd be, it would help us.
Right. Okay.
But. No, we don't, we're not gonna sit here and bang our heads to 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 cut down to the bare bones right now until we know what the what the cost impact of the town is. But these are high numbers. And we know these are high numbers because we increased. And we know these are high numbers because healthcare went up and we have nothing to do with that, we can't negotiate that or anything, some of this stuff is out of our hands. But these are high numbers.
Right.
So that's, I think that's where we are, I, but everybody's basically, everybody here's got sick to their, they're sick to their stomach looks. So that's about where we are, Mark.
Okay.
Alright, so think about it, think about it, we're gonna move on to the um quarterly financial reports. And Mike, I'm trying to make you make you wait so long for this one, this one's a little easier, thanks for the bite of stuff. You, the floor is yours again, sir.
Okay, I'm not sure how much we can. Get down to on the financial report, I will say it's very early. Uh, in the reporting cycle, I have nothing to believe.
Give you a prompt on what you should say. If you say the following sentence, you'll have done your job. Molly, do you have any questions?
Mike. Please don't hate me, but um, is it possible? I really like the financial statements that are in the audit, um, like the statement of activities and expenses and. Um, actual the budget, just to have a grasp on the finances and. I'm finding it hard just to go on a on audit that was a year ago, so if. I if you're pulling stuff anyway monthly, if there was a way to have a shared folder for the board where. We could access those, I would, I personally would would find it helpful, um. Uh, that's where I was going with the quarterly reports, just to have have some grasp throughout the year of where we're at. Um, it's, you know, to get the odd, I just, I found that information really helpful.
Yeah, I don't know if I can get to that. All that in information, but I can give you something, it's always with the something that was sent. Obviously not meeting your needs is what you're saying.
No, no, I'm just, no, no, I like, I like what was in the audit, I'm just saying if you're pulling that anyway, if you're pulling like the actual to budget information. Or the um statement of revenue and expenses. If you're pulling that anyway, monthly or quarterly or in you're looking at that and like in the balance sheet, if there's a way just to throw them into a shared Google folder. So we could also see those or um. I don't wanna make more work work for you and have, you know, pages and pages of documents for a meeting quarterly, but. Um, just so with, I feel like it's important for the board to get familiar with those and have an idea. Throughout the year of where we're at financially and not just review an audit that was a year ago. If that, if.
Yeah, so I I don't pull um balance sheet stuff, balance sheet is a place and time. I'm looking at the financial reporting of revenues and expenses. So could you, what what exactly are you looking for, Molly? Let's let's talk, let's start with that.
I like seeing where we're at, like if, when I looked at that audit, um. The actual to budget, we have our budget and then we can see even if it's just mid-year, seeing where we're at at that point. Um, you know, we've had some conversations where we don't know what's in a certain fund or how much money is in a reserve, um. I think just being having that.
You wanna see encumbered funds?
And this isn't, I don't think this is abnormal, I know Saint J has, they get monthly reports like this and maybe I could ask them specifically what they find helpful. Um, but for me, I really liked that statement of that of um revenue expenditures. And I think it was changes. And yeah, we don't need like tons, it was a, it was like a one-page report in the audit. Um, but if you're not, if you're not pulling it, Mike, um.
I don't, I don't pull it that way, Molly, this, this is what infinite visions provides. So let's, let's talk, let's talk about what what it provides and I can try to modify the format. To get it in a way that maybe is more helpful for the board.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, this is what I use, what I use, what I sent is what I use to monitor revenues and expenses now. We can change this here, this section here to be more helpful. Um, I do realize it it doesn't give a description, I know what they are, but I can't expect you guys to know, that's ridiculous, so. I mean, it's a little bit here explaining interest, athletics, you know, Ed Fund payments. Transfer some reserves, I can try to get some more detail in here, but um, I are you saying this? If I could get a better description in here, would this not be helpful?
Yeah, I guess, you know, um. I could probably sort, spend some time with this, I don't, again, I don't wanna make more work for for you and I. Trying to figure out how to make this work, but um, if I spend some time with us, I could probably understand it, but at first glance. It's a little.
Here's, here's an example, here's an example right here. Where it's breaking it up by function and by description, this is the expense, the previous page was revenue. And these are expenses.
Yeah.
And this is actually a lot more detailed than what the audit report has, which is. Within the functions, it's giving you salary versus benefits versus a lot of other items.
Yeah, that overview is nice, just to have that um at first glance, you can tell, just kinda see where we're at, but.
But but let me, let me ask a quick question, if I give the summary and something looks off, I know what the next question's gonna be. So Mike, why are we off?
Right.
Hey, and this provides the detail to tell you what area it's off by.
Yep.
It's just a question, learn, learn, us learning how to read it and that's back with this, so. And that's back with this, so. I think the more we look at it, the more we understand it, so the more often we get it fresh, the more often we can look at it if we're so inclined.
And I think the other piece she's asking or they're asking for, Mike, is also like a quarterly report of the endowments and where they're at. With what's been spent and where the interest levels are and things like that. All of the other.
Specifically, specifically the capital reserve and the building fund or the. And and that sort of thing, the unspent funds that we're sitting on, even if they don't change from period to period. There they're sitting so that when we go back to them, we don't forget, we don't miss, because last May, we misallocated something. To the wrong fund because we didn't have it right. And so the better, the more often we have the same information, the better, the better verse will be on. How to spend the money, when it needs spending.
Yeah.
Alright, I.
We can, yeah, we can figure, we can, we can figure it out.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you for these, for right now. Thank you for these and we'll try to, we'll try to tweak our requests. And um, see where we go. You good with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. So you guys are all being done with quarterly financial reports?
Yes.
All you guys.
Quarter.
Everybody done?
Yes.
Alright, cool. Okay, um. The next one is going to be on student representative. Um, so for the student representative. Last year, our acting upper school principal. After some discussions with a prospective candidate, asked us in the absence of said prospective candidate to sign on prospective candidate. Who we have subsequently never seen again, or you guys haven't. I have emailed her and talked to her about this and. She's just too busy to take on the role and she's, it's just, it's too daunting and so we gave her this month as part of our board outreach to her. We showed her that there was a door away and she asked, did she not have to do this? And so, which is fine because she didn't have the time. She's got, she's got many extra activities and she's busy and um.
It was the most polite resignation letter I have ever seen.
And so, what I, what I would be looking for here is, um, there's two, there's probably two, there's probably two things that I'm looking for here, but the first one is going to be. If we could just please release Kaylee Goodsell from her responsibility that she didn't actually sign up for in person. That Dave Schilling signed her up. From her, from her role on the school board and we can do that. That's going to have to take a motion based on the policy.
Yeah.
I'm got action warrant.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion to release Kaylee Goodsell from her role as um. Student representative in accordance with policy C forty.
Oh, second.
I have a second on that one. Is there any discussion there? Okay, so all in favor of removing Kaylee Goodsell? Melissa, Melissa got a second on that one. Okay, and this puts us with, we we went from um one to zero, but it's roughly the same and so we're going to lean on. Big blonde freshman and we're going to tell him. We're going to call him in.
So someone else is going to be volunteer.
Yeah, but he's got, he wants money from me. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be budgeted, but for right now, we have no student representation. Right, from this side, but my, some of my six dollars a week, you can, you can knock out some of my six dollars a week for him. And so that is our current situation with the student representative. Great. Alright, that's where we are. And I have a second public input here for, there's any public input for tonight?
Can, can I just say?
Oh, please.
I did talk to Kaylee um, kind of extensively about this and she felt very torn in her decision. She knew it was right for her. But she also feels very strongly that there should be student voice at the board meeting, so it'll be my task to. Get some high schoolers and or middle schoolers to be coming um with your welcoming to just present to you about what's happening.
I think that's the plan that you talked about at the beginning, just to start bringing kids in.
Just start bringing kids in so that there's still that element of student, because I think that's the spirit. In most part of the board policy in the first place, and so maybe just having kids showing up and seeing what happens here. And being able to present and get your feedback, that will maybe garner some more interest in the role in the first place.
We're so likeable.
You're very likeable. The student council kind of as a group took it on and rotated through. We could do that be a way, and you could do middle school and high school student council, you have more kids that like, and you know, maybe do one a year or something like that. Yeah.
That's, that's policy again.
Right.
Yeah, we have a policy, we have a policy.
Yeah, so.
Policy is written by a guy that writes very um, very tight policies, yeah.
It's not an official student rep and it's just student representation. Yes.
Right, which is what we can do for this until someone is interested.
Well, we, we get any representation. We're, we're happy to, we're happy to listen to presentation. We're happy to listen to students and.
Student presentation.
Student presentation, in the, in the short. Okay, so that's that. Now moving on, second batch of public input. Anybody? Lance? I can't see his, I can't see if he has his hand up.
Sorry.
I think it's good.
Alright, we're good. No Lance, okay, probably asleep. Alright, uh, future agenda items. Now here's one I got for you and next meeting date. We have on our schedule the follow, a building committee meeting, but I told you in the building committee meeting, if there was nothing on it, we were going to cancel it. So that is on the sixteenth. And uh, we're not going to do that. I have nothing to report. I have nothing to report to anybody. I've got, I don't have ninety minutes to sit there. Um.
I don't know, Lance has put his hand up and I don't know if that's.
I said, public input, put your hand up. Let's let him talk. Lance, please allow Lance to speak, Mark. Hi Lance.
Hi, yeah, no, I was, I was trying to hit it and it wouldn't click, so. Now, I was curious on the sports, why, why the lower interest in sports? You know, Danville has been, it's a small school, but in the, in the state of Vermont, it's, it's been well known for its. Athletics and I'm just curious why the decline.
As a, as a school teacher, my answer would be because we're seeing this across different schools. I would say because video games are awesome. Um, and we have, we have children who are able to. Make connections with other humans in other towns where, so the social event of, and again, this is based on my opinion. Um, and what I'm seeing in the school district that I work in and and in other school districts, um, we, the social event of sports. Um, that it was, um, no longer exists because the social events can happen in other ways and other places.
Um, just wonder if we can, if we can poll other D four schools, D threes and just see what they're experiencing. Because that's a big draw for, for Danville always has been.
Alright, I just want to remind everybody in the room that public comment is not a discussion. So we'll take his and I'm going to point you to the athletic director. I don't want to fall into the trap of being. Friendly with the people that we're friendly with and then shutting down people that we're not because that is very expressly forbidden and I get lectured on that all the time. I will send your comment to Randy. Lance, you cool with that?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand that, but that that's fine.
So I, I cannot let you open a discussion and public comment and then not let somebody else who wants to talk about something have a Q and A. I, it's written on my agenda here. Uh, I can follow, I can follow up with you.
Okay, yeah, let's uh, let's uh, Randy, go ahead and reach out to me and.
Yeah, I don't, and I'm not meaning to be rude. I'll follow up with you on an email tonight when I get home.
That's fine.
And I'll send it on to Randy. But that was really for everybody else in the room who was having a chat.
Sorry.
Alright. Public comment, not a Q and A.
I'll make it an agenda.
Okay. Future agenda.
I mean, the budget.
Budget twenty twenty five. Alright, again, the next meeting date, we're not going to have our meeting on eleven to sixteen and.
Do we have time to talk about the building committee at the next meeting? The, what we, the follow up items that we had from the last meeting at our next board meeting. The NASDAQ and that, the RFP that we just tabling that all together into the end of the budget or.
No, we can, if you, if you want to add those to the agenda, this is where you would tell them.
I mean, do we have time to do that? That's the question, I guess, if we have time and that anything to.
When did the email say that it was supposed to be vetted by? Because I thought it was after the December meeting. Oh, no, not on the building committee. I meant the. Name Mark sent us. I thought that's what you had said.
Oh, for the HVAC, the proposal for that?
No, for, I thought you meant the state audit thingy.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry.
So it, it's possible that we, that we're going to have a December building committee meeting, but we don't want to have a November committee meeting. And so at the board level, if you want to talk about the NASDAQ.
Right.
Then you need, we can put that on our December agenda for this board and see if we can get that going. And so then we just need to follow up with the superintendent. About NASDAQ.
Yeah.
And see about gathering some, having them help us gather some data and we have some of that started.
I already did that. I gave it to Molly.
December agenda.
Oh, there's, there was more, there was more, Mark, that came out of a meeting. Um, yeah, we appreciated your reaching out to. Um, I think it was, was it Sean and when he worked at Winuski and now is at Kingdom East? Who, your contact you talked to about NASDAQ.
Yeah.
Um, I had, I mentioned that at the committee meeting and um. We talked at length about uh, different information that would be helpful and we should probably update him. Meeting, right?
But this is a future agenda. But we said, you can send it to me and we can send it to Mark. We can send it together tomorrow.
Um, I can send you the minutes, Mark, from the meeting. It would be in that, from the building committee meeting.
Okay. Okay.
So, and we're going to talk about that in December, NASDAQ, put that on the agenda. And then is there anything else right now that comes to mind? If not, the, the, the thing, the thing fills it. So.
We need to do this student representative, someone that Natalie has coming. Should that be penciled in? Are we having someone come?
If she, if we can find a student to do a presentation, then she'll let us know along the way. Sure, right along the way. So no additional future agenda items. And with that, um, I'll change the motion to adjourn. One motion to adjourn, second to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Alright.
Alright, and Lance, right when I get home, I'll send you an email. Why, why? That wasn't, that wasn't.